Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont County Planning Commission to order. May, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will call the roll. I am present. Larry Brown is here. Gardener Fay is here. Rudal Mergelman is here. Travis Payne is here. And Dale McCullough is here. And with that, the, we have an agenda in front of us. I hope you've had a chance to review that. Any comments or changes needed?
I move to approve the agenda for today, September ninth, 2024.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Rudal, you want to start it?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you for that. And we also have the August sixth minutes in front of us. Any changes needed there?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August sixth, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have approved the agenda and the minutes. Unfinished business is probably the Fremont County zoning regulations. I mean, we have been working on it, but it's under new business. And so, Dan, you want to take it away?
Yep, so this has just been a short 23 months' worth of work. So what we have here today is the final draft of the Fremont County zoning resolution rewrite. So the final draft of the Fremont County zoning resolution prior to adoption. Planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has made changes to the FCZR since its tentative adoption by this commission to include formatting, revised language, new definitions, and new uses as a use by right or special permitting. Additionally, staff has implemented changes based off of suggestions by Plan Tools as part of the Affordable and Obtainable Housing Study that was made part by a DOLA grant received by the county. Planning staff has worked closely with Plan Tools, County Attorney Bellis, County Attorney Jackson, and County Commissioners Bell, Grantham, and Paul to get where we are today. So I will start with changes since the tentative approval. For, in our definitions, we had, there are either new definitions, additional wording, or a modified modification to the wording. For agricultural buildings, backyard poultry and fowl, dry cleaning service, farm and ranching quarters, emergency service station, human habitation, property sales, rodeo grounds, seasonal employee housing, tiny home and tiny home community. And then, section 2.02 BB classification, we did the same language, just referenced it differently. Section 3.07, trailer and tent camping, we have some new language in that. Section 3.12A, backyard poultry, that's a new use. Section 3.13C, there is an exemption for animal units, new language in addition to the regs. 3.21, home burials makes a reference that anyone inquiring about home burials should contact the county coroner. 4.02C, residential two, SRU agricultural sales is a new use that was added as a result of combining two of the zoning districts. 4.11, for the airport, new language that was recommended by the airport manager. Section 4.16C, industrial zone district, for SRU solar fields being a new use. We have 5.01, tiny homes, that's a new use. 5.02, accessory dwelling unit, we have the addition of tiny homes, minimum development requirements for the zone district they're located in, and an access requirement, so we've made a change to ADUs. Section 5.02C, home occupation three, we corrected some language, added some new uses, and revised the lot size to match the new zoning. 5.06, echo restoration, we have new language there. 8.01H, tiny home communities, that is a new use that we developed with assistance from Plan Tools. So it would allow for a tiny home community to go in certain areas with a special type of permitting. 8.03.3, commercial development plan. We did some clarifying language of the percentage of growth that's allowed in a certain timeframe before it triggers new permitting. So an existing building, or existing business that's occurring, if they want to grow, fantastic, but if they grow over a certain percent in a certain amount of time, they would have to come back to the planning department for permitting to ensure compliance. And then, section nine, zone change, we explained the criteria a little bit better. We do have a note on here that there's some items that have been reworded or moved or deleted since the tentative approval. Based off of recommendations by staff, county attorneys, or direction of the board of county commissioners, these items are not detailed within the document. And if this is viewed favorable today by this commission, we would be moving forward to propose a final draft to bring in front of the county commissioners. And if that's the case, we'd be scheduling a public hearing, hopefully October 15th, but obviously that's dependent on today. So, as always, if there's any substantial changes that were made to this document, if viewed as favorable, we would bring it back to this commission for input. And that's kind of my starting point here. I did receive feedback from John Carper. He said that he's good with the revised regulations as presented. We have some, I met with, well, I received an email from Commissioner Hammer. And, two, three, four, five, six. He's got eight suggestions, mostly wording and language suggestions that I'm going to propose to the county commissioners as this document moves forward. I thought a bunch of that would be helpful. So that's kind of my starting point here, and I'd be happy to have a discussion.
Okay, the, let's, before we get down to the nitty-gritty details, which I'm sure we've got some comments for you here. One of the challenges in reviewing documents, especially when there can be multiple authors or multiple changes by multiple people, is, you know, version control. And in the documents that we've got, the copy of the copy of final regs, there's the, so on the issue of version control, there, we probably need a better method so that, so that if I provide comments, the other commissioners can see them, if they provide comments, I can see them. And then, plus, the important part of that is to see how they're resolved, see how the comments are resolved. And, and the, you know, it gets, it gets difficult because of you get copies of copies of copies and all of those crazy things that happen when you have multiple changes to a document that's under review by a lot of people. And, but, but the, a lot of times, what the method that is used by organizations is through using Word and using track changes, where you can see who made the change, you can see what the resolution of the change is because you have red lines and strike-throughs. So, in other words, when, when language is added to the, to the document, you can automate, just by color, you can see where that language has been added, where things are struck, you can, you can see that too. And plus, with the ability to comment on the sidebar, if we call it that, the ability to comment there gives everybody a chance to see the, all of the, all of the changes. And so, I think, I think we probably need to work on that for a future, for, for future purposes. I mean, it's the, we've, we've got, a lot of people have already had a lot of input to the document. But the challenge for, at least speaking for myself as a commissioner, is knowing what those, what the inputs were and how they were resolved. So, let's just put that, use that as a, maybe as a marker for future, future undertakings such as this when we're trying to review a document and get everybody on the same page.
Yep, that is absolutely noted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and then, one, one further general thing. What we've got in this document here is a lot of places where it says there's further discussion needed. Okay, and so, it would seem to me that, that it's entirely appropriate to have that discussion with, with this board, as well as the county commissioners once we, once we come to a resolution of everything. And so, do you have any thoughts on how we might do that today?
So, a lot of the comments that you guys saw on your sidebar were, it was discussion back and forth from, I think, the third or fourth time the county attorneys have had access to it. And it was the final bit of discussion that they wanted to bring up before we met with the county commissioners to get a direction on how they wanted us to go on that. So, we had met with the Board of County Commissioners to get further direction on those items, and then, that direction has been implemented into this document already. The changes have been made, but the sidebar was not updated.
And the sidebar was not, not updated?
So that, I, I do apologize for that confusion, but wherever you saw dialogue back and forth between staff and the county attorney, we got direction on that and made those changes. We just didn't clean up the sidebar that you guys saw.
Okay, all right. Well, Commissioner, do you have some comments? I see someone's been taking notes over here, so. Who would like, who'd like to take a stab at a start?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll jump right in. I, I have to, I have to make a couple of comments here, and I'm not really sure how I can do this without stepping on toes, but I, I will confess that I didn't read my emails in a timely manner like I should have and pay as close of attention to them as I should have. I just assumed that when I got the email, that the meeting was scheduled for the ninth, that that was going to be the regularly scheduled time. And then, I got to looking at the calendar later on and realized, no, a regular scheduled meeting should have been the day after Labor Day. Okay, and that's when I called staff and asked for a clarification, are we going to have a meeting today or not? And I was told, no, we're going to have it next Monday, which is exactly what the email said when I went back and looked at it. So I confess, that's my mistake. The problem I have is that I got a download on Thursday, on the 29th, and it was 193 pages document. And I'm looking at this thinking, okay, well, I, and I, at the time, was thinking I had to have this reviewed and ready for comment by the following Tuesday. So I spent my, my three-day weekend reading this thing, okay? And making notes and comments, and then, and then, when I called and I was told, no, your comments had to be in yesterday. I'm like, wait a minute, yesterday was Labor Day. Who would have been there to reread them anyway and review them? Okay? And then I realized, well, that's not really a fair criticism either because then they have, would have that, from that time till today, to, to review those comments. Okay, but that's my frustration because I was behind the eight ball on it. That doesn't, that does not, however, get by the fact that we've got 193 pages of, of legalese to read here and try to, and, and try to figure out how we ask staff to respond to our questions that we had months ago in meetings. And I just really think it would have been very timely if I could have had at least two or three weeks to go through this thing and then provide comment. Or, and I tried to do this, and I couldn't get this new computer system to work, but I wanted to add comments on the side that I thought maybe somebody, staff, would be able to pick up real time and, and give me a response to it. However, that doesn't work on this system for some reason. We need to figure out how to do that. And I think that falls into your, your criticism of how do we, how do we make these comments so that everybody knows that, you know, what, it would be helpful to know what other people are thinking on the board. At least it would be to me. So I, I do have some comments here on certain things, and I'm not sure that, a couple of them were items that I brought up months ago in the meetings that we did have, and I didn't see how they were resolved. As far as, here are some definitions and stuff like that that I think that we could work on. And then I had an issue with the same thing. Well, further discussion required. Well, okay, who's going to do that discussion? It was my understanding, in dealing with that little county attorney briefing that we had a few months ago, that it was our responsibility, really, to write these regs and to make sure that they're the regs that we, as a board, want to send up to the BOCC. Now, staff has a responsibility of doing that and, and, and basically working with us. And so that's why I hesitated, because I don't want to step on any toes. You've done some really good work here, but I just have some questions about the direction that we're going. And I have some questions about what's going to be the unintended consequence of some of the actions and some of the languages in this, in this bill here. I, I, I'm going to caution the board also because I think they need to be really careful in how they want to steer this community. I remember we had people standing up at the, at the DSR trying to get projects approved, and I asked a question a couple of times, well, how does this fit into the state mandate for affordable housing? And I got the brush off every time. And, and I actually asked a couple of the commissioners in private meetings. I said, well, how are we supposed to do this? And there was, there was a laugh and a chuckle, and it's like, well, we don't know because the state told us we had to do this, but we don't know how to do it. I'm like, well, okay, that's my responsibility as, as sitting on this commission. That's my responsibility to figure out how in the world, in this, and, and, and to be real honest with you, I was shocked when I saw this tiny homes thing pop up here. It's like, where in the world are we going to put land in this county that's, that they can do that on? Now, I'm sure you've got something in mind, but I haven't seen where it's at. I haven't seen no maps that show where this is going to be. And I guarantee you, if you drive up to Salida and you look at that tiny home community as just as you're going into town, you're going to go, wow, what is going on here? Do we want this in our community? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But I think it's my job as a commissioner to ask those questions and to get legitimate answers as to how the community feels about putting this wherever it's going to go. I have no idea. So if I seem like I'm a little frustrated today, I am because I just feel like I haven't had enough time to study this document. There's some new stuff that popped up. I don't know where it came from. I'd like to get some answers to it. That's my comment.
Thank you for that. The, the, so, stepping back, maybe, maybe the, maybe the process that we could have thought about, you know, hindsight being 2020, is, is to have a work session with the attorney where we all sat down with the attorney and went through the document essentially line by line. Now, that would require us to be able to have something to work from, where we've made, hopefully, with an electronic document, made electronic notes and all of those kinds of good things. But, but it, the, right now, there's been a lot of discussion with the staff and the attorney and the Board of County Commissioners, it sounds like, to, to get to where we are today. But what I would suggest is that, is that, let's, if, if you do have, you know, a specific comments, maybe we can take those on, just, just go through them line by line and where other people, you know, one, one way to do it is, is pretty, we, we probably don't have enough time for 192 pages to go through a page by page. Say, okay, does anybody have any comments on this page? But the, maybe, maybe that, a, a work session ahead of time would have been useful. So, that, that's hindsight. I mean, I didn't stick my hand up and say, hey, let's, let's have a work session on this. But why don't we, why don't we start with some of your comments and see where we get to?
Okay, I can do that. I guess my first question would be to the county attorney. Did I have the correct understanding that it is our commission responsibility by state law to provide this document to the BOCC? So is that correct?
My understanding is it's this commission's responsibility to conduct the master plan rewrite, not the zoning resolution. So the master plan is the responsibility of this commission.
Okay, well, why aren't we rewriting that in addition to this, then?
That would be in...
I'm assuming that would include the mapping that I'm talking about, correct?
That, the amount of work involved with not only just trying to do a zoning resolution and then a subdivision regulation, we, we're trying to stagger the documents that exist within our office. So we were trying to do the zoning resolution. We're going to move on to the subdivision regulations, and then we're going to move on to the master plan. So if this commission's tasked with the master plan, but the department's already rewriting the other 180-page document, staff would get stretched very thin with trying to process all the applications and conduct everything else. So it's just amount of time and how much work in the day. So the, the master plan does need to be rewritten, and it is going to be coming to the board, hopefully, pretty soon to be rewritten. It's just that, on top of trying to write a, take a 260-page document down to 180, it's just too much work.
Okay, you, you have to bear with me here for a minute because I'm trying to sort this out of my mind. If we're responsible for the master planning, and, and the state wants us to do affordable housing, they got it, the county got a grant to help write that in, how are we supposed to, it seems to me like we've got the cart before the horse here. Don't, if we want to have a tiny homes community, shouldn't we know where it's going to go before we write the regs on how to regulate it and how to build the thing? Am I, am I, am I out in left field here, guys? It seems to me like we need to, we need to get the proper sequence of things done here. I realize it's a lot of work.
So, obviously, staff thought the sequence was the appropriate way to do it, or we wouldn't have done it this way, so it was meant to, no slight to this board. When I was rehired back two years ago, one of the things asked of me when I was being interviewed was the zoning resolution needs to be a priority. This is an outdated document and is mostly not relevant. And I was asked to begin with this. So, that's how I got started. So, it, while this board will be rewriting and influencing the master plan, any research that you guys would need done would have to be called upon staff. And if we're already in the middle of writing a different document and processing all our applications, it just, there, there just wouldn't be enough time. So, I, I guess that's how it all started.
Excuse me. One of the, one of the questions I've had through this whole process has been the, the striking of certain terminology and, and a rewrite of definitions. And that chapter that came up, number one, I think it is, on definitions?
1.05.
That was the first time I'd seen that, what the definition of some of these, some of these terms are going to be.
Most of the definitions, or all of the definitions except for the ones that I read were in front of you the first time when it was tentatively adopted. So the...
Okay, well, just humor me for a minute. Pull up the definition of cabins, if you would. I'm trying to get this. I think it's on page 19.
So we have, we've got two, two different paging systems. We have the electronic paging system if we've, if we're using, if we're pulling this up on our computer, and then we have the page numbers of the document.
Well, the page numbers show on the computer version of it anyway. If you look at actually, actually, the definition that I'm looking for, for cabin recreational, shows up on page 20, it's atop of page 20.
Yes, sir.
And, and what I'm seeing here is that you've got a definition for a cabin that's in a camp, a campground or a trailer park. We've got a whole county full of cabins up in the mountains. I don't see a definition for them anywhere. How are you handling them?
So, so there's, there's a general usage definition. If we go to a dictionary and look up cabin and see what that is. But in terms of, of a planning commission, this special definition of cabins only applies to the items defined in it. So smaller houses that we would, through usage, call a cabin, is not, is not necessarily defined in the regulations, if I understand it correctly. So, if you wanted to build a cabin, quote unquote, what we call a cabin?
It'd be a dwelling.
It'd be a dwelling. So that's, that's where it's covered in these regulations, is, is through that mechanism.
A single-family dwelling.
Single-family dwelling.
Yeah, so it would count as a dwelling and listed as a type of dwelling. So where we specifically have this listed out, yes, it, it does refer to, in conjunction inside of a travel trailer park or campground with plumbing facilities. If you have acreage out on the, out anywhere in the county and you wanted to put, it's a type of dwelling, you'd, you'd be pulling a permit for a dwelling regardless of the construction out in the hills. So if it's going to be log construction, and what we all think of a cabin, it's still a dwelling in our eyes when it would be permitted.
Okay, now, when this document is approved, and it's approved by the county commission, it's going to be posted up on the, on the county's website, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so I've been in this position where I was told by staff, well, go look at the standards. It'll explain what we want you to do. So I pull up the standards and I'm reading through them. Wouldn't it be helpful, right here, to just make a one-line comment that, that you need to refer to something or other if you're going to build a cabin other than in, or have a cabin other than a campground? I'm just, I'm just thinking of the common usage and the people that are out there reading this standard.
Sure, so, so, the, what, the, maybe I can synthesize your suggestion there. I think what you're suggesting is that, is that there's a, a note added to this definition, note for other types of what may be called cabin, seat dwelling. Because then it's...
Don't you think that would be helpful to the general public if they're reading this for the first time?
And, and that's what I'm suggesting, is that, that a note be added to cross-reference to dwelling, the definition of dwelling for people that may not speak the, the planning commission lingo, you know?
Yeah. Okay, not to flog that dead horse, but let's go to page 25. In paragraph 123. The distance parallel to the front lot line, measure between side lot lines at the front building setback line. That seems pretty vague to me. I understand what you're trying to do there, but you're trying to measure something based on a setback to a building? I can see where you're going to have a problem here. If you've got, if you have nice rectangular or square lots, fine. But if you've got a wedge-shaped lot, you've got a problem. The distance parallel to the front lot line. And oftentimes, the front lot line is a curve.
So, the, what, what I would note is that, is that, this is, you know, one thing that's always helpful are, are figures, drawings, and representations that you can look at and, and then understand. But this is not referencing a specific building, but a building setback line. And so, so that's, that's the difference. You can, you can have a bare piece of lot, no buildings on it whatsoever, that this still defines... still defines what the lot width can be, or how it's measured.
Yeah, so if the front setback would be 50 feet, say, in a zone district, 50 foot back from the, the front edge of that lot is where that measurement would go across the measure width. 'Cause it'd be parallel to the front line, at the building setback line for that zone district.
And, so, but the, you know, nonetheless, it's, it's, I think, an interesting observation, because we've, the, we've had, um, proposed developments in front of us that had wedge-shaped lots and a new road, and, and so, the, you know, it's, it's a little bit harder to understand, perhaps, in some of those cases, or even where, uh, you know, up the canyon, we've had weird lot shapes that we've had to resolve, make some changes so that it was, became clear what was, uh, you know, what was going on there, but, but, so if...
What triggered my comment here was the fact that we had a gentleman in here with a 40-acre parcel over in Penrose, and he wanted to subdivide it, and he went through four different designs on it, and he could never, ever, ever get it resolved. And, and one of the comments, I remember he was gonna put a street in with a circle right in the middle of it.
Right.
And because it was an irregular lot, the lines got set back, he had no building. He hadn't, he didn't have a place to put a building. So I, I just, I just, I brought this up because I think it's a potential stumbling block in future development, people coming in wanting to, and we have a lot of lots in this county that are very, very irregular. I mean, we've got 200 years of land being divided here and there, and willy-nilly. Okay, I get it. I just think there, I just think there's something, something just not quite right with the Ruby chair.
So with that, um, the, the next set bit of regulations we're gonna be working on is gonna be the subdivision regulations, and that, those regulations are the ones that contain the language of buildable area and, um, basically everything that affected that man's proposed subdivision. So that is the next thing that's gonna be coming up, and we have had a few lots come in for an exemption from that rule to the county commissioners, to see if in certain cases, the way it's written now could be bypassed. So, um, since that's come up a few times, that is one of the notes we have in a copy of our subdivision regs, where we jot down everything that needs to be changed or needs to be looked into further. So when the subdivision regulations come to us, that's when we're gonna be, revisit that language and try to see, so the, this is just telling us how we are gonna measure it, it's the subdivision regulations that say that you can't do that.
Or under what conditions you can't?
Yeah, under what conditions you can. So it's that length can't be doubled, the length versus the width, ex, you know, except in certain circumstances. So that, that's the language that, um, was a stumbling block for that subdivision, as well as numerous others. So when we approach our subdivision regs, that's one of the things we're gonna revisit and see if there, it needs to be changed, or how.
Okay, let's go on to the next one, page 38. The 34, excuse me. On 198, I brought this issue up once before. I think we're, I think we're opening up a can of worms here, when this SMM definition. Now, I was told by staff that this definition was provided by the state of Colorado for, by, by statute. And I, I just, I just have a real problem with it, because I can read this in several different ways. I can make the case that a contractor with a shovel in the back of that truck is hauling equipment, therefore that equipment must have a tag on it.
And, um...
A vehicle or equipment that is not designated primarily. So I've got a shovel, I'm, I'm, I'm out irrigating in the back of my truck.
I, I don't read that regulation the same as you're interpreting.
My point is, I, I, I've been around long enough, I'm a, I'm a, I'm an old guy, okay? It's gonna depend on some code enforcement guy having a bad day, and I get a citation because that equipment doesn't have a tag on it, and now I have to prove I'm right, and I'm not in violation. That's my point.
So, with this SMM, that's predominantly mines or actual business owners.
Mm-hmm.
That is not personal-use equipment. It's one of the criteria we check, code enforcement checks when they go out to a site. Um, when SMM is expired, the DMV would send a list up to code enforcement to try and reach out to people, to see if they've sold it, to help satisfy whether it be tax records or the actual registration of it. But that definition is part of CRS, that, that's been a, a part of code enforcement since there's been code enforcement, and part of the planning department since there's been, and it's one of the criteria that we check predominantly when we are doing reviews for special permitting, um, or there's an application in front of us, code enforcement. While they have the right to, they're not stopping and checking anyone's equipment, nor do they have any intention to start checking equipment and seeing who has tags and who does not, or for proof of it being on a tax roll, um, to a parcel or tied to something like that. If it, if it's something that this commission wants removed, I could certainly present it to the Board of County Commissioners. But it's been something that my department's been tasked with, based off of working with the clerk's office and the DMV. So if, if you guys want the direction that that needs to go, I could certainly present that opinion to, or recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, does it, does it still fit in? I mean, you said that it's only for mining and commercial?
It, yeah, so it's, it's business use or mining, yes.
Okay.
But later on in the document, there's a further discussion of this, and, and there's a distinction between construction equipment, on one hand, that's used for, you know, doing road improvements and building structures and whatever, and farm equipment, on the other hand. Is that true?
Yeah, farming equipment, um, we do not, if you use a heavy piece of equipment for your farming or agricultural operations, your own, not being hired to go do everyone else's, 'cause then it's back to that commercial lane. But if, if you have a backhoe to go maintain your ditches, that is not SMM.
But see, that's the essence of the argument I am, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to head off.
Okay.
Because I can see where that argument's gonna be made. Because I personally own a backhoe and a skid steer that I use on my farm.
Yep.
They're not used for anything else. Do I have to have an SMM tag on each one of them?
Most certainly not. It's you being used on your own land.
Okay, but that's, the essence of my argument is who gets to determine that?
So the problem is, is when we started defining regulations beyond what Colorado revised statute revi, or explained them as, we were actually advised against making them more specific, and if we are gonna mention a specific thing, the county attorney says, "Match the state regulatory agency's definition and do not add more in there." This is what the state has deemed as defendable, and we were advised against putting more in.
So why couldn't you just strike the, a vehicle or equipment? Why can't you just take equipment out?
Because then we're modifying the state statute, that, that definition. In our regulations, yes, but then we'd be modifying the state statute, and we were advised against doing that.
Well, I'll make the same comment I made a few months ago. It doesn't make it right.
The, I, I have a suggestion there, perhaps. The, if you look in the Colorado revised statutes at, at this particular definition, they use a different structure, rather than just blasting it all in one paragraph. If we use that structure, I think it helps bring some more context to the discussion of what's, what's, um, of the intent, of what, what's intended to be regulated. So you might, you might look at that, Dan, and see what, see, because it, the, the structure they use, I think, helps make it clear that, that it's really rolling stock, that is what's trying to be, um, regulated.
Okay. I'm gonna absolutely look into that.
Okay, let's scroll down to page 38. And look at 220. I think, I think right up front, the definition looks fine. It's just that I'm afraid that what we're doing here in defining truck terminals, that we have a whole lot of, of individuals in our community here, who are gonna be adversely impacted by this, because they have rural properties where they can park one or two or three trucks, and now they're gonna be, by, by, by virtue of this definition, they're gonna have to be looking at, at getting a permit for a contractor's yard, either one or two, depending on what kind of an operation they have. And I think there's just gonna be an uproar come out of this, I really do. I mean, the, the definition is pretty straightforward, but I, I just think we're opening up a can of worms here.
So that's one of the original definitions that the regulations had, um, for, for home use, is it home occupancy only that allows? So home occupancy allows one truck, correct? So right now, in the way the current regulations are written, to where if you drove, um, a large truck for hire, you technically would need a home occupation in order to have one truck at your house. That's the way the reg, regs are written right now in, uh, the residential zone where it would, um, be allowed. So all of that is part of the current regulations? Um, we made no changes to that. The, the trucking terminal helps a lot more when you have folks with two or three semis, and they store five, eight, 10 giant flatbeds, reef fridge, and all sorts of stuff in their backyard. That's what we're viewing more of the trucking terminal at. Um, we, we know with agricultural, um, if it's for your own stuff, it, we're not viewing that as a contractor's yard, but if you are for hire and have the big trucks, um, that does require permitting. So that's what this definition was for. But this wasn't a change that we had made. We can certainly change it if that's the direction you guys like.
Well, I think this term, this definition's gonna be used later on in the document to define what you can do in a contractor's yard, one or two, or whatever. So that's, that was my main concern here.
Okay.
46 has an interesting definition, and I've got a question mark about...
Hang on just a second. So the, I, I'm not sure on this one, but it would seem to me that, um, the, the state has a definition of truck, okay, which we don't have in our, in our regulations, but the, perhaps this could, it might help to, um, further delineate, um, personally-owned vehicles, I mean, pri, private vehicles, you know, that's, the idea is that, uh, if, I've got a pickup truck, and it, it meets the definition of the state, uh, when they talk about a truck, because it's a, it's a motor vehicle with a body on it designed to carry materials, which is my pickup truck. But that's not the kind of trucks that we're, that we're trying to get at here.
Not at all.
And so that's, maybe there's a, maybe there's a, a phrase or something that could be added, that personally-owned vehicle, because of the, you know, Colorado used to have the defin, the distinction between trucks that were not available for use in commercial activities.
And in fact, they called it a recreational vehicle, and they don't do that anymore.
Yeah, they don't do that anymore.
Right.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think the, the, hopefully the thing that safeguards this definition is where it discusses, um, you know, loading, repairing, renting, leased, kept for hire, parked or stored for, for dispatch, for hires, common carriers. All of those things, six, to me, exclude the, the average person, such as myself with an F-350 and my own trailers, right? Like that, that's agricultural purpose, that's personal use. I'm not for hire, I'm not leasing, I'm not renting, I'm, um, so, the hope would be that, you know, as long as people aren't operating, either having the tractor-trailers, um, or operating as a business use, then it, to me, they're exempt by this definition.
Yeah, the way I read it, though, it's all or statements, so it could be any one of those applies, it's not and. You know, so it's not saying all those things have to apply, any one of those would trigger if you're doing or statements.
Okay.
Okay.
I see that.
In section 302, you're talking about storage structures. And, uh, I just have a question here, a general question. You, you, you talk about where these containers or storage structures can be placed, in residential one, two, and low and high density, and all this stuff. I, I guess what I'm missing here is that I'm not understanding how a ranch or a farm is gonna spin into the scheme of one and two and three.
About what page are you on?
Yeah, and, and it would be helpful, to me, anyway, uh, to, to have a map that shows...
What page are, what page in the document are you on about?
I'm, I'm on, on, uh, 46.
846.
Yeah, section 302. In fact, what you're doing is you're giving me specific places that they can be used, and places that, I'm assuming, if, if I don't hit one of these definitions, then they cannot be used. Is that, is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, so we specifically state where they are allowed, we do not have a, a statement in there where they are not. So, um, we, we could clarify that by, um, putting in a number four of these zone districts, these are not, not in allowed use. So we certainly could do that, if that would clarify.
Well, I think that would be helpful, because at least you would, you would have a definition that's complete.
Yeah, I mean, it does say, in any zone district, except as noted below, so if it's not one of the ones noted below, it ain't, it ain't going in.
I, I can't remember, 'cause I can't go back that quick. Some of that was covered under the agricultural, the stuff about how much storage you could use and what you could use for storage.
Yep.
It was under the agricultural uses. I remember reading some of that somewhere. I don't know if it specifically said storage units, but it listed all the stuff you can put out on an agricultural site.
Yeah, um, and a while back, that's when shipping containers first became a, a popular thing for people to get, and, um, at first, shipping containers were only allowed for agricultural purposes, and then it was deemed that we're not going out and checking what's in your shipping container, so your shipping container or storage structure is either allowed in this, these areas or not.
Yeah, I think there's even stuff about old semi-trailers.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Keeping those for storage and what was allowed, or they were, so many's allowed.
Yep, yes, sir.
But I think storage containers was in there, but that was in the agricultural, if that's the question.
So they, uh, a long time ago, they had taken the agricultural part out, and it's either allowed for storage or it's not, we're not going to check to see if there's hay or grain in it. Um, but that was a change that was made a bunch of years ago. But, uh, if you want us to take out the, 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 the entry to that, where it's, um, the beginning, the opener there, where it says, "Use the storage structures in any zone district except as noted below," I mean, we could always take that out and put a number four in there and just detail what zone districts they're not allowed in, if that's more clear. That's, that's something we can do.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, on the, on page 47, um, section 3.07, regarding trailer and tent camping. And once again, we have these, these residential, high and low densities and whatever spelled out. What happens if somebody has a ranch or farm and they wanna let somebody camp on it for a weekend? My grandkids are coming to town. Can I put my camper out there?
Absolutely. So, yeah, so depending on your zone district, the, the largest zone district we have, you get three months in a calendar year. And then, the, um, the residential one, residential two, you get two weeks in a cal, or residential one, residential two, low and high density, you get two weeks in a calendar year, the residential... The residential three, you get three months in a calendar year.
Okay, but if I'm, if I'm the general public and I'm opening up the standards on the website, why do I have to read 193 pages to figure out whether or not I can put a camper out there for my grandkids to stay in for a weekend on my ranch? It doesn't say it can in the definition here.
Well, it tells you the zone district you're in and how long you're allowed to stay.
I know, and I have to go through the whole document to figure out whether I fit in that category or not.
How else could we categorize that? Because our, I mean, and I, I don't, I, that's not a confrontational thing. All of our zone districts are broken down by a certain type or a certain name. And in our camping regs, we have those different districts listed for how long you could stay. I, I, I wouldn't know how to break that down differently. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly open to suggestions.
Do you appreciate my conundrum here? If, if I'm the general public and I'm opening up this document and reading it, trying to, I'm trying to obey the law, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a 180-page document. I, I completely understand your point. There, it is searchable.
And I'm asking this question real, really because I, I know that Fremont County wants to become a destination for recreational uses. I mean, that's, that's their advertised mission statement, at least for Canyon City it is. But how do, how do we, how do we know that we're not going to be breaking the law if we bring an RV in and put it on a, on a ranch or a farm?
We, we do have it to where this is searchable. We do have staff that answers the phone four days a week. We do have open counter software where you could punch in your, your address and search what's allowed on your property on our website. We, we have it as many different ways as, as I could think of. I, I just wouldn't know how to make it easier or where I could place it in the regulations to make it more to the forefront. But everyone's got a priority of what they want to look up. So I, I'm not sure.
We might be able to put it under the allowed uses in the zone district handouts that we have, which would be in chapter four of the regulations, and put in their camping and tent usage, three months out of the year for the bigger zone districts, two weeks out of the year for the other ones, and then not have it listed under the allowed use. If, if that would be more helpful if you fill.
We, we could put it under the allowed use, but then somebody still has the issue of trying to figure out what zone district they're in to search that to see if they're okay. I mean, we can add it to that for sure. We could put it in the allowed uses and, and just detail camping for what duration in the zone districts where it's allowed, if, if that would be helpful.
Well, is it fair to say that for any residential, you're, you're allowed at least two weeks? I mean, it doesn't matter what, what zone you're in. If you're in residential, you can have at least two weeks.
Pretty much, yeah.
It can be a tagline for some kind of handout, like you, like you're saying, and saying, look, if you have a question for anything over two weeks, let us know. Otherwise, you're good.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if it's, we're, we're not talking about a weekend that we're trying to regulate. It's something longer term, more than two weeks and three months in some regards, which I think is totally understandable so we don't have people that are, you know, trying to live in tents where they shouldn't be. So I, I mean, I, I appreciate your question, but I mean, it's, it's not for the weekends, it's for more than two weeks. So otherwise, it doesn't really matter, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. I'm just, I'm just contemplating, I, I'm, I'm thinking along the lines of just a citizen of the county, trying to figure out what, what it is that we've actually enacted here and what's the intent of it. I think it would be helpful to put a comment in here. Maybe that if you're, if you, if you anticipate using a trailer or tent camping for more than two weeks, that you, you need to talk to staff or some, I don't know. There, there is a two-week time period here, but...
Yeah, and those time periods are the current time periods. We just made this chart, so it was hopefully easier for people to read because the description that we used to have was not user-friendly. So we, we didn't modify, we didn't make it greater or less than what it currently is. We just added it to a chart so, to try and help folks navigate and understand.
Is this written as kind of a hammer to be used against homeless people? Squatters?
I, I wouldn't say that we have anything written in there as a, as a tool to use against anyone.
Understand, but it gives you a regulation to go say you can't stay here.
Yep, so it, it does give us the ability to where if you're staying on the property longer than this timeframe, we, we need to have a conversation and find out what's going on. So yeah, so it, it is, it allows for recreation. It doesn't allow for people to be renting up sites to people for people to camp on their property, but for personal use, it allows people to enjoy their land and be able to have use of their land. And it, it does allow for enforcement with, with code if people are living...
Abusing it.
Yes, sir.
And, and it's a simple, it's a, I say simple, but it's a, an accepted procedure and available to everybody to trespass someone. You can say, I've got a trespasser on my property and I want him gone. Call your, the sheriff or the police department of whatever the case may be, and they, they will assist you there too.
Okay, let's see, page 49, 313.
Was that 49 you said?
Uh, 39. Forty-nine, sorry.
No, 49, 49, 313.
Animal units.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess my question is, where did this 18-acre exemption come from? Is that a number that we just picked out of the blue or?
Uh, that matches our largest zone district. So the residential three. So the residential three zone district, that's, that's the acreage of that, that district. And that was a way to allow for folks in the farming and ranching community to be able to exceed animal counts when they're, for a period of time when they're working their cattle without having a loophole of a, a feedlot popping up somewhere. So yeah, so the commissioners were pretty adamant that, for the farming and ranching community. Our department wholeheartedly agrees. We wanted an ability when people pull their cattle or, their cattle off of range and need to, to work them, vet them, do anything like that, that they have the ability to exceed what would normally be allowed for a period of time without loophole-ing a, an illegal business. So that was, that was an attempt at a, a provision to work with the farming and ranching community.
Let's go to the next page, paragraph 315. And I have a question there. The, there's a definition. And it says, I guess I'm, I'm wondering what as defined means for an ag building. Isn't that one of those things that might need a little more work here?
You referring back to the definition of ag?
Yeah, it says an agricultural building, comma, as defined, comma. Shouldn't we be, shouldn't we be doing that definition here?
So, and, and I know this one came up the last time we all had a discussion. The building department actually has a definition for what they consider an agricultural building and what they'll allow an agricultural building to be defined at. I believe we've, we had that in there and then we took language out of there because it wasn't our language. I think that was the direction the last time we discussed this. Because originally, I think we referred back to the building department and listed the building department's recommendation. And then when it was asked, can you, can you explain that definition? I said, no, it's not mine, it's the building department's. And the guidance by this board was then we should probably take that out if it's not yours. I do see where we maybe took out too much and could reference the building department for the definition. I think that would be helpful because I do agree, as you point this out, as defined, if we don't have it defined, then what are we referencing? So we could certainly add as defined by the building department. I think that would maybe be a helpful addition to that.
Well, that was my recommendation months ago because I, I do know for a fact that the building department has redefined what their definition of an ag building is. So, and, and just in the last couple of years.
Yes, yeah, in the last couple of years, they had changed it. And then I think we had their full definition in there. And again, I was questioned, can I define that? Can I explain this? And the answer was no, so it was take it out. So maybe I took too much.
Okay. Let's go onto page 52. And 4.01. There's a discussion of 100-foot setback to all lot lines. And that relates to 4.01, 4.02, and 4.02, different types of allowable uses. Is this setback going to be relative to all property lines?
The 100-foot setback?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So that 100-foot is the minimum lot width for that zone district. The front setback is 25-foot.
Or depending on, it's further defined in the, in the body of the thing there that it can be 15 feet or 25 feet or conditionally.
Yeah, depending on what it's adjacent to or what it houses, front side or rear. So yeah, so it's, because we do have lots in so many different locations, it's kind of situational with, with what's happening.
No on-street parking is allowed. This is in the conditions. And a minimum of 100 feet setback from all property lines is required. And this is in the agricultural section. For accessory building unit uses.
Yes, 100 for agricultural.
I'm, I'm reading that as the 100-foot setback from all PL.
So that 100-foot setback line is, and the no on-street parking is when you have an agricultural operation and you're, you're having your personal agricultural business on that property. So if you're going to be conducting an agricultural business on your land, which is allowed, you have to be farther away from the, your property line so you don't impact your neighbors. That's how I'm reading that. Livestock, poultry, rabbit sale of agricultural or forestry products produced on the property. So you have to have adequate off-street parking for your customers. So for your agricultural business, you have to be 100 feet away from your property lines in order to operate your own personal agricultural business on your land.
Okay, but that's not what it says to me. I think you need to redefine that, rewrite that. Are you trying to say this 100-foot requirement is for parking only?
When, most of, most of the outfits that I've seen that have the big barns on a commercial outfit, they've got to be set back because of all the trucks and tractors that are coming in now.
But the barn only has to be, what is it, 30 feet from the PL now, on the side, aside PL?
If you've got a big rig loading crops or unloading hay or feed or something, they got to have room to back those big trucks in there.
I guess what triggered this for me was the fact that I own a lot. It's an agricultural lot and it's 300 feet wide. 315 feet, to be exact. There's no way I could meet these setbacks to do anything the way it's written now.
We can certainly clarify that. Correct me if I'm wrong, original language?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So yeah, this is how it's written currently in the, the current. I, I do see what you're saying. We could certainly come back in and clarify that.
Okay, that would be...
And make it more clear.
Okay.
Is there, is there a different place in the regulations where the setbacks for agricultural businesses are defined other than here?
See, once again, that's left to building and safety to set those standards. At least that's my understanding of what's going on now.
So what is being stated here is not the agricultural business that we're saying is 100-foot setback. It's the off-street parking for the customers that are coming for your agricultural products that you're selling on your property for less impact on your neighbors. But we need to make that more clear with the 100-foot that we're not talking about the produce or the animals. We're talking about the parking of your customers coming.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Sounds like a good catch to me.
Yeah.
I just have a general comment here about the contractor's yards and the nine-acre minimum requirement for that. Once again, where did that, where did that nine-acre number come from?
On page 53.
So in our current regulations, a contractor's yard is allowed in agricultural living, which is a nine-acre minimum. So what we did is when we combined that zone district with a four-and-a-half-acre minimum zone district, we didn't want to necessarily make things more impactful than the way they are, have, way they are now. So if you have a four-and-a-half-acre lot to that nine-acre lot, you have to apply for a contractor's yard through SRU, right? If it's nine acres or larger, then we could do it through a home occupation. There it is. Sorry, trying to retain 180 pages of...
I'm sorry, you're muddying up the water for me now.
Yeah, so we have that one, HomeOc's.
Yes.
Standby, we'll...
Are you saying here in that, that with the, if you have a minimum of nine acres, then you, you're not subject to a special review use? Is that what you're saying?
For a contractor's yard one, so one that's less impactful as long as they follow the regulations on page 114, it tells you how to screen it, how to make it less impactful for your neighboring properties, how to not be a big mess for your neighbors. On the smaller acreage, then we do require either a home occupation or an SRU, depending on the acreage, the zone district, where it's an easier permitting process for it, but it's more covered and watched.
I'm, I'm just about out of comments here, so I'm going to make just a kind of a brief summary here of, of this particular situation. I think, I think with this contractor's yard one and contractor's yard two, the definitions and the actual uses where you're spelling out what can and can't be done and how many vehicles can and cannot be stored and how many acres have to be required. I know in this community, there are a lot of farm properties out there that are smaller than this, where people have some very nice, uh, maintenance sheds. They have two or three trucks that they operate. This is a, this is a large trucking community. You see, everywhere you turn, you see belly dumps running around. And I just think we're stirring up a real can of worms here in, in many ways. I think you're going to see a whole lot of people in here at these counters that are irate at having to go through this process of permitting and, and, and.
The county has, um.
There's going to be a certain amount of that, I understand, but, but I, I think the emphasis of staff should be to make it easier, not harder.
The county did adopt the right to farm and ranch policy for the county, which does safeguard a lot of the farmers. That's got the implements and tractors and trailers and mowers and all the hay and equipment that does not fall under a contractor's yard. We're talking about.
No, I'm, I'm talking specifically about truckers. The ones that have, in fact, there's, I, I, I just have a vision of a mind of three or four on Field Avenue out here that have very nice operations going. They're very successful, obviously. They, you know, they've got nice homes and nice garages in the back and, and their lots all is, is gravelled. But I can just see where, where, where there's going to be a real problem with some of these, some of these people not going to, they're not going to be happy with some of the definitions that we're coming up with here. And I guarantee you, somebody's going to ask about this. Where, where'd this nine acres come from? I've got a four-acre parcel. You're trying to tell me I can't park my two trucks on it? Like, I've been doing that for, I've been doing that for fifteen years now.
Yeah, but running a business off of your residential land has always required a permit. So, in our, in our contractor's yard regulations, and this currently says all contractor's yards and buildings in existence as of April twenty-sixth of twenty-eleven will be allowed to continue as they existed on that date. And will be subject to section five oh-four of the Fremont County zoning resolution. So what we tried to do is we added in an easier permitting process for a smaller contractor's yard for the. So if somebody has their two or three trucks, they don't have to go get an SRU. We, we tried to add in the ability to make it easier if you're smaller scale. But if you're very successful and you have greater impacts, then it bumps up to that special asset, SRU. And we have it, um, the acreage where we have it matches how the acreage is now. We, we actually added in an easier way for some individuals to, to get started. So that, it, it may not seem like that, but this was, this is actually, um, this actually gives the option to have an easier method for the smaller folks to get started. Um, may, maybe I'm, we're not explaining that correctly. That could be it. Um, but right now, this is less restrictive than what we currently are operating by. It, it gives an easier option.
Okay, well, I think that's the end of my, uh, comments, other than I was kind of surprised to see that whole chapter on airports is stuck in there. We hadn't discussed that at all.
Airports has always been in there. The only change in the regulation um, was we consulted with the airport manager and he gave us, I think, a one-sentence addition to add in there to, to be relevant to the current regulations. Um, so airport was always, has always been in. We made zero changes besides that entry level, uh, statement. And that was a recommendation from the airport manager.
I didn't make a note on it, but I just have one question regarding the, uh, the, uh, the industrial area in front of the airport.
Mm-hmm.
Does that fall under the airport overlay area where they have, they have a say in who does what there?
Um, no, so the, the airport industrial? Where you have? It is under the airport overlay, but it.
Yeah, yeah, there was this, I did make a note on it, I'm sorry, but just, I can't tell you what paragraph it was, but I noticed there was a, in, in, in that airport document, there was something talking about an overlay of surrounding area and what they couldn't, couldn't do.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and, um, none of that was, is a change. That, that's current regs. Um, but yeah, so there, if you go to the GIS or if you ever come up to the office, we could pull up GIS and show you the different zones and the different areas, um, and how far-reaching that is. And, so it, it lists basically where stuff applies.
Okay, and that brings me back to my final comment. I, I just really think it'd be helpful to have the Fremont County zoning maps in, updated and, and, and so we can actually point to an area and say, wait a minute. Or yes, this is the zone we're talking about. So I get, so I guess we need to work.
You mean?
We need to work on that, on that. Getting the horse before the cart.
Okay. Okay, I'm sure the comment is noted there. Does, uh, anybody else have anything they'd like to?
Yeah, I got a little bit.
Sure.
I have a few comments. I know comments were due Monday and I'll kind of second that. There was a ton to go through over holiday weekend, so I didn't quite get to it. Apologize for, and we're talking about it a little bit now, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. Um, a couple of the twenty-twenty-four bills, I just wanted to touch on and make sure that, you know, what was passed in this last legislature was, uh, considered under what we're, what we're doing. If we're, you know, doing a zoning rewrite, make sure that we're, we're in compliance with, uh, twenty-twenty-four bills. A couple that I had tagged, and this is not comprehensive, on all that, that need to be considered, but that, uh, like the HB twenty-four one zero zero seven was the residential occupancy limits for family definition. So, you know, it's not saying you can't limit, uh, the occupants, occupancy limits. Um, it just has to be a proper family definition. And I think it's, I think it's okay. But I just, again, I guess it's a general flag of making sure that we're we're in compliance with that because we have a pretty good definition of the family. But the single family and the dwelling unit was family or household, and we don't have a definition for household. So, again, just kind of making sure that that was, that was considered. Um, the other one is SB twenty-four dash zero zero five. Landscaping standards for non-functional turf areas, something we've talked about in the water world, uh, a bit. And it's saying, uh, it prohibits local governments from, um, allowing non-functional turf on commercial, um, it's, and, and a few other definitions. But I didn't see when I looked through the landscaping on, on, on the zoning anyways, that that, that was, you know, anywhere in there. So I don't know if that's more of a building thing or what have you, but again, just making sure that the new legislation that came down was being considered when we're doing this rewrite.
Yep.
I guess it's a larger comment.
And I hadn't make any changes to the landscaping. Uh, landscaping is one of those things where when applicants come in, uh, it's a discussion that comes up as a requirement or a waiver request.
Yep.
Um, due to water usage, I generally lean towards waiver requests on landscaping.
Yep.
Because it's, it's not a good use of water. It's.
Sure.
We shouldn't be telling people to do this extravagant landscaping that's either going to die or be, um,
Yep.
be quite a burden. So, um, while that's not specifically addressed in writing, um, they are allowed to, uh, request a waiver on that.
Yep.
And I generally am, uh, very waiver-friendly when it comes to landscaping.
Totally agree, and, and I agree with that methodology. It's, uh, the bill prohibits us from allowing them if they want to.
Okay.
So that, the, you, uh, you know, as a general comment, uh, this is, this is not the last time that th- these regulations are going to be discussed. There will be a board of county commissioners meeting. Uh, and, you know, if you've got, uh, if any individual commissioner has, uh, something they want to make sure that the, that our county commissioners consider, uh, it's, it's perfectly legitimate to come to that, uh, meeting and voice your concerns as a, as a knowledgeable citizen.
Sure.
And, and I'd also encourage, um, any comments or further feedback or anything like that. It, um, absolutely, depending on how this goes, if we're tabling this to discuss it again, or if, um, you guys want this to move forward with suggestions. If, if you guys have additional comments, um, those can all be noted as it moves forward to the commission. So, um, while we would have liked comments, so we could have had, uh, more detailed answers and I wasn't, um, trying to locate stuff.
Yep.
Um, we're open to receiving stuff at any time.
Yeah, and I think my, my general comment is just to make sure that we're in compliance with, uh, twenty-twenty-four legislation. I think that's my general comment.
Yep. Um, so that's, I could look into that a little bit further.
That's why Eric Bellis gets the big bucks. Right, Mr. County Administrator?
Um, small comment, page forty-six. This was talked about, um, when we, when we discussed all this before, but it had to do with fencing.
Yes, sir.
And that E, um, line. So the general fencing is on forty-five, but that E is on forty-six. And it just says, this does not include ag fences that do not obstruct vision. Uh, so just a question is, you know, the way, way, the, way I read that is, you know, nothing in fencing applies to ag fences that don't, that do not obstruct vision. And if that's the intent, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that's the intent.
That is absolutely the intent.
Great. Uh, one sixty-five. Page one sixty-five.
What are you going to make?
You got me jumping around now.
Yeah, well, this is in, in line, so I don't have a ton, so that should be SI relief, I guess. So we're talking about commercial development plan questionnaire?
Yep.
When required, so E, when required, specifically three. Um, well, I'll start with two. Sorry, I have comments on both. Two, uh, substantial change of use. So I think the way that was written before was any change of use. So how are we defining substantial change of use? Wouldn't, shouldn't it just be any change of use? Because what's, what's a substantial change of use from one to another?
So, and, and then that was any change of use was turning us into, even if it was a like business, but a technically a different type of business, it was triggering people having to come back in front of us.
Sure.
So, um, while I don't like things that are defined well, the substantial was a crack at trying to allow staff to make that determination so we don't have to do unnecessary permitting for folks.
Yep.
Um, it may not have been the best word.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't have a better word for you, so, yeah, maybe it is the best word, you know, and if everybody's cozy with it, then great, but.
Yeah, so, um, I, I don't like gray. I think you guys have learned that about me. Um, but I, we couldn't think of a better way to word that.
Sure.
With still allowing growth without unnecessary permitting or change.
So maybe the, the comment that I have in, in three is, is a better, better use of time. And the physical expansion enlargement of the impervious area of existing use of fifty percent growth within two years. Uh, I'm kind of uncomfortable with that, if I'm being honest. So that's saying that every, every two years they can grow forty-nine percent without ever having to do a commercial development plan? That seems, uh, I understand we're not trying to put our thumb down on people, but man, that seems a lot.
A narrower amount with a longer window.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, the greater amount of growth with the shorter timeframe was a recommendation.
Yeah, I, so I guess the question is, why have a timeframe at all? If somebody's going to grow more than fifty percent, shouldn't they probably be looked at a little, little closer? Uh, whether they're small or large?
I, I, um, I certainly don't agree, uh, disagree with you. Um, and that, uh, I, I initially proposed them a much narrower window.
Yeah.
Before having to talk to us again. Um, to make sure that we are addressing impacts and stuff like that. Um, the, the larger percentage in, um, shorter timeframe was a, a recommendation from higher up.
Okay. I just think that might be issues with utility people. Let's see, um, one eighty-seven. So, this was, I just had, since we see these all the time, drainage plan reports and always asking for deferments.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm looking at now page one ninety-two. So the section ten oh-three, we're talks deferments. So am I reading this right to say that these are the only deferments that can be made for drainage, drainage plans and reports if it's, um, does a uh, commercial development? Maybe authorized by the board for commercial development applications until the commercial development plans? Am, am I reading that correctly to say that's the only deferment we can make on uh, drainage plans and reports because a vast majority of, of deferments that were asked for is just on, you know, simple lot splits or things of that nature? Um, I, I just was, needed some clarification on that.
So the, the easiest way to explain that, um, this is referring to the SRU, CUPs and C, commercial development plans, not.
Okay, just to that specific.
Yes.
Yep.
So, um, again, when we go to revisit subdivision regulations, that's where we're going to talk about deferments with land use.
Cool. And then I just had a question. So on the staff note, in the staff report, um, I don't remember what the exact verbiage was, but it was, you know, something to the effect of changes were made that necess- weren't necessarily in the report, notated in the report. So is that, is that, is it fair to say that, that changes were made from uh, different versions of this that aren't outlined in blue or?
Yep, so, um, unfortunately with, uh, multiple reviews by different staff.
Yeah.
At one point in time, there was a click to accept edits. Um, that accepted the edits. Um, so it was the, the removal of some things or some, uh, clarification, or some wording and stuff. None of it was substantial to my knowledge, but yes, that, I don't have the strike through to show you.
Okey-dokey. And then just an ask, so the tiny home commi- community that was, that was brought up. So how would that, um, just out of curiosity, how would that affect like, uh, the Royal Gorge Ranch as, as we know it? You know, that's a tiny home community, right? As, as kind of proposed, that's what it was, right?
No, so it, um, the intent of that applicant was never to retain ownership and, and have it as a tiny home community. He wanted to have it be a smaller home, private ownership, little, um, self-sustaining kind of village, if you will.
Yep.
Um, the tiny home community would have to retain one ownership.
Gotcha.
Um, it.
Like a mobile home park or something like that?
Think of it like a manufactured home park or a travel trailer parking campground.
Gotcha.
Each lot needs its own designated side. The roadways have to be the same. The parking has to be accommodated. Um, it, that's why if the tiny home community is allowed wherever a travel trailer parking campground is currently allowed because they're, they share so many things. They're very, um, similar. So, um, we, for a test fit, we went with the tiny home community, um, everywhere a travel trailer parking campground could be allowed by the same type of permitting because they are structured very similar.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps clear it out in my mind. I, I appreciate that because I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure since it was its own thing, you know, but that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, no individual ownership within, um, where, where we didn't structure it like that. It would, uh, so we, tiny homes are, are definitely not going away.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, they're, the building department already has them defined and has the ability to, um, take a peek at them. So, um, this is where, for now, we feel comfortable that tiny homes could fit. Um, we also would allow a tiny home if mounted, uh, correctly to be used as an ADU. So if it's installed correctly, uh, has an engineered foundation, um, is no longer on its wheels and is permanently mounted, um, and a tiny home could be used as an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. Um, sorry, going back to the commercial plan thing, as I was thinking about it a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
I think we had talked about it a little bit before where maybe there was still a chance that, uh, utilities could be notified, even if it's not a commercial plan, that there was substantial growth happening or something like that. Is that still a path we could go on?
Absolutely.
Yeah, great.
Do, uh, is that something you guys would be more comfortable in writing or a practice by the department?
Um, I'll leave it up to you guys. Yeah, but as, you know, as a utility, speaking in those, in those shoes, you know, it's, there's just a ton that could come from that, you know, if we're talking about a fifty percent growth, you know, over two and a half years and, you know, they're going to be taking fifty percent more water, we would very much like to know about that.
Yes, sir.
Yep. That's it for me.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners? The only thing I'd like to say personally is I'm the, kind of the rookie up here. You've, you have already gone through this again. This was all new to me. I didn't go through the first part of it. But I got a little confused at the start, so I.
But I got a little confused at the start, so I ended up going through the first part of it. And I read all the old regulations. Had all these questions and went up there and the staff was more than grateful, gracious to sit there and explain a bunch of stuff to me. A lot of the same stuff we're talking about here came up. And then I got the new ones, and I could see the change, and I could see how it was streamlined, and see the rhythm of the setbacks, the, how the whole thing kind of falls together. And when you look at it that way, there's been a dramatic change from what you people started with that first time. And I just want to say thank you to the staff, I had a book full of questions and they took care of most of them.
Great. Great, I would like to extend my thanks too, to, to you Dan and, and staff for all the work that you had, obviously had to do on this, it's, this is, this is a, a pretty big undertaking, and we're not done. This is just kind of step one of multiple steps here, so, the, um, uh, and one, one thing that the, this is, this is now not specifically on the, on, uh, the document in front of us, but on our share drives, if there could be some way that we maybe split that into two folders, where we have folders for, of reference materials, and then a folder of documents that we're going to be considering at the, at the, at the, uh, current meeting. It would be awfully helpful to me, because I get, I, I look at that and I say, well, I look at some of those and I say, gee, did that change? Do I need to re, re-review section eight now? Or, or whatever. And so the, having it split that way, where we have reference documents that, that are generally applicable to us, master plans, stuff like that. And then a folder for documents that are the subject of the current meeting would be really neat. Any other comments from commissioners? The, all right, so, do we have a specific motion that we're, that you're looking for, or?
So, um, depending, obviously, how everything goes, uh, the goal would be to get this scheduled for a public hearing, not tomorrow, but the next B O C C. And then, um, the county commissioners felt that this would, um, deserve enough attention for a special meeting to be announced. And tentatively, that would be October fifteenth. But, um, for the actual motion today, it would be the commission decided this was favorable and recommend approval with um, items, concerns noted, and I can certainly bring that up in my staff report to the B O C C, the planning commission's direction, um, and have it be part of my presentation. So, um, if you guys are substantially comfortable with the final draft, it would be to push this along to the B O C C for final adoption.
Any thoughts on commissioners from, about that?
I'm just wondering if you are going to have enough, uh, rewrite stuff to do that, that is going to be considered substantial, or can you think, do you think you can handle the objections or, or clarifications that you've promised us today that, that, that's going to be minimal and, and not have a great impact on so, on the document itself?
Well, um, if we were to, to look at, um, all the suggestions that were brought up, or critiques that were brought up, um, we could certainly have all of those outlined and present those to the planning commission, or the, the board of county commissioners to see if they want us to make the changes that were recommended, and if so, we would have a sample change for them to adopt. Um, or it may, they may say, no, that, that's not something that we would want you to push forward with a change. So, um, as part of my staff report, I would, um, pitch all of the zoning resolution, and then I would have a section, uh, time where I present your guys' concerns with sample changes to be made, and then it would be up to them whether or not they wanted to make those changes or not. Um, so I could make them aware of your concerns. Um, if, if they chose not to move forward with those adoptions, I, I don't know if that falls into that substantial, um, at that point, I'm, I'm just presenting, I'm not the one making the decision. So I don't really know how to view that with you. So they, when I say substantial changes, uh, I would think if I presented this to the board of county commissioners and they completely hated something in here, and they're like, no, that is not moving forward, that would be a substantial change that we should come back and show you, not necessarily the, um, adoption of recommendations, whether or not they choose to. Does that make any sense to you guys?
So, so how about this? How about this, that, that one of your comments to the, a board of county commissioners is that uh, if there are substantial changes made, uh, to these, to this current, uh, draft of regulations, that they consider kicking it back to us for further review?
Absolutely.
Does what does?
Yeah, that would work.
And I, from, from my perspective, that sounds like about the best of all worlds we can get, where Dan has taken our comments into consideration and relays those to the board of county commissioners uh, for their consideration as they make a final judgment on some of these things, I think would be, would be great. So, if I may, then I, the, the, I think the, the appropriate motion then is to move that we forward these, um, this regu, these regulations to the board of county commissioners for consideration uh, with the noted, uh, concerns and discussion items that we've, that we had here today. And I make that motion.
I'll second that one.
Does that, does that sound good?
I like it.
We've got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Rude?
Aye.
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 With that, I believe we're, uh, out of business to consider, and so we are now adjourned.